Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Invited guests, families and friends. Welcome to our city council meeting. I want to acknowledge our city staff who is here with us today. And our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, also our deputy city attorney, Mr. Derek Challenger, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. I also want to thank my colleagues for joining us here today for this very important business. And I would like to, at this time, invite Bishop Yvonne Wright Dunn to the Birthing Place Worship Center to provide our invocation. Would you all please stand?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to serve. I invite you to pray with me. Eternal and always God, I thank you on tonight for your wonderful grace and your mercy. Thank you for your continued love. Thank you for your continued allowing us to serve you. For you said, "The earth is the Lord and everything in it." So today, Lord, we thank you. As David wrote in Psalms 1:21, "You are the lifter of our head; you are our keeper." So tonight, Lord, I pray for our mayor. Thank you for keeping him. I pray for our vice mayor. Thank you for keeping him. I pray for every city official on tonight, and especially city council on today. Lord, I pray that you have kept them for this appointed time. Lord, thank you for the work that they are embarking, not just in our great nation, but in Portsmouth, our great city. So today, Father God, we yield our vessels unto you that your manifested glory will be revealed in this chamber. Have your way on today. Let the agenda be the agenda that will glorify you. Let every voice come in harmony and unity, so, Lord, that your will will be done. We ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We will now do the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I would ask that all of my colleagues please note your attendance electronically.
Seven members of city council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We have the minutes of a call meeting on April 22, 2025, and of a regular meeting on April 22, 2025. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
To the adoption.
Please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted 7:0.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time.
Question.
While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We have now come to the item on our agenda, public hearings, item 25-125. Public hearing on proposed real property tax increase. This is a public hearing item. You are not required to have signed up to come and speak on this public hearing item. If you choose to do so, you need to state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none? Okay. State your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Sheila Joseph, 139 Grand Street. As I speak about the taxes, I understand the purpose of we being taxed, or personal tax, or house tax, or any real estate. The purpose of help share some of the expenses that we need for the city leader's salary, the worker's salary, and different other things, you know, the police, the fire, like I said before. But I would say that those that, again, please think about those that own their home and don't have no mortgage, been paid into it, how they can come up with something new. I made notes on the wall there from 1800s up to now. You got different rules and guidelines that people set under, and I would like to know what changes have we made since those years of those that served before you sitting here today. Are we still going by those rules and everything for us, the taxes or anything? And also, I want to say, for the vehicles that's sitting in your yard, no matter what type it is, how old or whatever, but I noticed that we be paying it and don't have car notes. I feel that we need to save some funds on that. A lot of real estate, I understand, some of them underserved, old and whatnot, you know, a lot of citizens can't update like they want to, but I feel that we need to sit down for those that will take the time and find out what I'm saying to the city officials or other citizens, that we need to come up with something that will better our city without taxing those that already paid into it, and give us a break from this point.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers to speak on this public hearing item? Item 22-125, on proposed real property tax increase. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. We have now moved to the next item on our agenda, which is city manager's report, item And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering on this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reenact ordinance number 2024-34 to impose and levy taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, on real estate, tangible personal property, privately owned pleasure boats, privately owned camping trailers and motor homes, and machinery and tools within the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, and to establish boats and watercraft weighing less than five tons and used for business purposes only as a separate classification of tangible personal property, all for the purpose of raising revenue for the support of governmental operations and the public free schools, and to pay principal and interest on public debt.
Thank you, ma'am. And before I ask for the motion to approve this, this particular item will have items A through item J, so there'll be a number of items?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, each one will be adopted separately.
Right, each one will be adopted separately. That's where I was going. Yes, ma'am. So on item A, do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Is any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7:0.
Madam Clerk, I do have a point of question, a point of order question. Item B, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering on item B?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to increase rates for water and sewage services as authorized by Sections 38-83 and 38-117 of the said code.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on item B? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6:1.
Thank you, ma'am. Item C, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance for item C?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to increase monthly stormwater utility fees as of July 1, 2025, as authorized by Section 11.1-43 of said code.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Any additional discussion on item C? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6:1.
The next item, item D, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Section 13-74 of Division III Emergency Medical and Ambulance Services of Article II Department of Fire, Rescue and Emergency Services of Chapter 13 Fire Protection and Prevention, and Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, for the purpose of modifying fees for emergency rescue services.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
We have to redo that vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7:0.
Item E, Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution approving the Community Planning and Development 2026 Annual Action Plan of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, and authorizing the city manager to file documents required to obtain the city's community planning and development grant entitlements.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7:0.
Item F, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance adopting the FY 2026 Classification and Pay Plan for employees of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7:0.
Item G, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance approving the FY 2026 through 2030 Capital Improvement Program and appropriating $143,387,980 in the FY 2026 Capital Improvement Fund, subject to receipt of the means of financing designated herein.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7:0.
Item F, and Madam Clerk, would you please read?
We're on H, sir.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, ma'am. Item H. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Members of city council, this is the item that you wish to withdraw. There's no need to read it. I just need a motion to withdraw.
Move to withdraw.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Please vote electronically to withdraw.
The withdrawal is adopted 7:0.
Next item is item I. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance approving the fiscal year 2026 operating budget for the Portsmouth Public School System in the amount of $293,421,549, and appropriating the necessary funds to implement said budget for the fiscal year 2026.
And we do have one registered speaker for this item. That speaker is Mr. Sergio O'Neill. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Sergio O'Neill from 1420 Elm Avenue in the city of Portsmouth. Just want to keep this really short and sweet. I'd like to thank those of you all that have really looked into what our school system is asking for and what they need. I think, you know, the right investment in public education is more than warranted, but I also urge you in times to come to really start doing your research a little bit earlier. That way, we can eliminate some of the tension that goes on between the school board and the city council when it comes to budget season. Some of it is created through, you know, whatever, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we want to move forward in a positive light. So, again, just, you know, do your research a little earlier, you know, find out. I encourage you all to, you know, visit the schools and, you know, see what's actually taking place in our school system, because contrary to popular belief, Portsmouth Public Schools is doing some great things, a lot of great things, and they deserve the kudos that they get considering the circumstances and the labels that are inherited from sometimes 20, 30 years ago. So we need, you know, we need to change the narrative, and hopefully, with, you know, with this council and the school board working together, we can make sure that we keep Portsmouth moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically. Oh, I didn't, it's not up here. Okay, Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. O'Neill, for coming to speak tonight. Just wanted to provide some context to the general public and also to my council members of why I will be voting no for the budget as presented for the school board budget. We've done a lot of work to discuss how to best supply the funds for the school, and from the very beginning of these budget conversations, my request was to fully provide the full ask for the schools. We unfortunately were not able to come to that conclusion by today, so for that reason, I will be voting no on today's budget for the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5:2.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is item J. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to appropriate $584,851,511 for the operation of city government during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have two registered speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Mr. Mark Kudaljutrowski. Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council and other neighbors. Almost six tenths of a billion dollars is the big picture. Not a bad budget, and hopefully, circumstances will allow us to execute it pretty much as laid out. But I have one concern, and in terms of the monetary value of it, it's relatively small in that context, but it's $1.4 million, and in my view, it doesn't belong in this budget. That would be for supplements for the participants in the city's closed pension plans, the general employees and police and fire and emergency services. So being Scrooge in May is not any less onerous than being Scrooge in December, but let me say again why I oppose these kinds of expenditures. Because the supplemental retirement plans that were established for the employees back in the day were designed to do a certain task. They were to ensure that at the end of an employee's work history, having served for so many years, and there's a formula that determines what the payout will be, it having to do with years of service, the highest salary earned during those years of service. The object was to ensure, oh, and this is significant, there was no contribution from the employee, no deduction from the salary that was paid for doing the job itself that went into this. This was entirely funded from city revenues, which means from the taxpayers of the city. Now, I feel this is a good thing to have something in addition to social security in the case of the general wage employees, or something for those who did not have social security coverage, police and fire due to federal statute. It's good to have this known quantity, but as in other lines of work, there is also an assumption that you know what the formula is, you know what you can expect to receive, and you have an opportunity during your work life to save money so that the combination of the city retirement, social security as applicable, any other retirement funds you have, and your savings will enable you to live in relative comfort in retirement. It is not, it was not the design of the plan to compensate for changes in the costs, the changes in the economy, to adjust for inflation, and that was all known in the beginning. So to come back at the end and say, "Well, it's not enough. You need to go to the taxpayers for additional money," that's not the way it works. That's not the way it should work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Sergio O'Neill. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening again, Sergio O'Neill, 1420 Elm Avenue. Just wanted to say, in the city budget process, it was very, it was clear to see that, you know, it's good to see the breakdown of what's being spent, where it's going, or whatever the case might be. I would just use this opportunity to encourage the public for the next budget cycle to start doing your research as well, because we all, when we are paying our taxes or whatever the case might be, we need to know what our money is going to. That way, we're not caught blindsided when things are changing, or whatever the case might be, new rates, new levies, new fees, or whatever you have, got to come about, because it takes money to run the government, we know that, but we're also inspecting a great product out of the money that's being spent with this budget. So, you know, it's interesting to see the investment that we, as the citizens, are making, you know, when we are putting our tax dollars in the hands of those that were elected to make sure they manage it well. I'm looking for a good return on that investment. I'm quite sure the other 95,999 citizens in Portsmouth are too. I would say kudos to, you know, this team, you know, especially the members of council that are really active, you know, with people outside of council meetings and having those discussions on, you know, what they, you know, what citizens, as far as what the budget should look like, and the feedback that, you know, I've gotten when I've raised questions as well. So hopefully, you know, again, hopefully, I'm quite sure you all are going to sign off on this unanimously, but, you know, make sure we, you know, keep the ball rolling and keep the positivity going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No, sir. You had an opportunity to sign up. This isn't a public hearing item, so if you're not signed up, you do not have an opportunity to speak, sir. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Councilman Moody, was there a specific statement that you wanted to make, sir?
Yes, I was getting ready to... Yes, Mayor, I was getting ready to get your attention so I can make that. I voted on tonight's Pay and Classification Plan Ordinance, which was agenda item F, and in consultation with our city attorney, and I'll read the following statement. I participated in the discussion and vote on the agenda item F tonight. I'm making the following disclosure in accordance with the Virginia Conflict of Interests Act. Number one, the matter under consideration provided for a $1,500 payment to retirees. Two, I'm a member of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Plan. Number three, the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Plan system is composed of hundreds of current and past city employees and officers. Number four, I'm able to participate in the discussion and vote on this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and that's according to our city attorney and Virginia state law. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
Councilman Moody, could you forward that to me when you get a chance?
Yes, I will, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7:0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our city manager's report. We are now moving on to new business. Item 24-127, boards and commissions. Councilman Hugo, are there any boards or commissions to report at this time?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. There are no board and commission issues for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Our next item, item 25-128, items submitted by council members. We have item A, and Madam Clerk, would you please read item, please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting a one-year extension of Use Permit UP 2222 for construction and operation of a two-building multifamily dwelling... operation of a two-building multifamily dwelling development not having not exceed 39 total dwelling units at 2216 and 2220 Waldron Avenue.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now moved to item B, which is adoption of a resolution. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting a one-year extension of use permit UP 2215 to construct and operate a four-story senior living multifamily dwelling, having not more than 82 residential units, located at 3993 Twin Pines Road.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is any, is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other items to be submitted by council? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So it's my privilege last week to attend the Career and Technical Education Signing Day that was held by Portsmouth Public Schools at Manor High School. This year, we had 33 graduating seniors who signed job offers on CTE Signing Day. 12 of those folks signed job offers to join the military. Seven of those folks actually signed job offers as a result of completing their early childhood education, career technical education program to head off to college, but eventually, upon earning their, their teaching degree, to come back to Portsmouth Public Schools to teach in our own school system. So an opportunity for us to send our kids off and have them come back home and reinvest in Portsmouth Public Schools. 33 students represents nearly double the number of kids who signed job offers at last year's CTE Signing Day. My hope is that every year moving forward, we can double and double and double until every kid that graduates from Portsmouth Public Schools is either headed off to college or we put them in a position to sign a job offer right straight out of high school. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other items to be submitted by council members? I have one item, actually two items. On April 15th, 2025, the city of Portsmouth lost one of our drum majors for justice. The Reverend Dr. Joe Billy Fleming, pastor emeritus of the Third Baptist Church, passed away. I would ask that we remember Pastor Emeritus Fleming in our thoughts and prayers, as well as remember his family, his wife, Ms. Johnny Fleming, and his son, who is the current pastor of Third Baptist Church, Joseph Fleming, and all of the rest of the Fleming family. The next item is, on Saturday, last Saturday, we had the Second Annual Wall Street Mural Arts Festival, which was supported and held by Support Portsmouth Public Art. Over 3,000 people came through to see the murals. We had artists from all over the world come to the city of Portsmouth to participate in the murals competition. It was a great event. The weather cooperated, and the most important thing is that we highlighted our new linked district with the focus on culture, art, and people coming together to celebrate all of those things. Hopefully, we look forward to an even bigger event in next year, 2026, but I think the organization deserves attaboy and certainly recognition for the wonderful event that they put on in bringing people to the great city of Portsmouth. That concludes my items submitted by council. The next item on the agenda is 25-129, report on pending items. Mr. Carter, sir, do you have any pending items?
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor. Sheriff, I'd like to deliver it today concerning the report back item from the last council meeting. When you have an opportunity, please review that. If you have questions or concern, get in contact with me. Thank you. That's it, mayor.
Thank you, sir. The next item is item 25-130, non-agenda speakers. Our first non-agenda speaker, well, before we go there, Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe the basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Brenda Porter-Rockwell. Ms. Porter-Rockwell, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, ma'am.
Mayor and council, thank you for having me. My name is Brenda Porter-Rockwell. I live at 1701 Atlanta Avenue, and I was here, last meeting, meeting before last, asking about the progress at 1700 Camden Avenue. That house, as I explained, had burned down in April of 2024, and took a long time through the process of changing hands, getting demolished, at which point I came here and asked the council to help me understand what the process is for getting that house to be completely, fully demolished and cleaned up. And I am very pleased from the outreach of the many council members, the phone calls, the letters, and the property is fully cleaned up now. And thank you for hearing me, and what I hope was the city exerting a little pressure to get this project over the finish line. My final two, first, final question and recommendation is, there was one piece of information that I was still left confused by when I had spoken to Craig Borkman, and I apologize if I got his name wrong.
Correct.
Okay. He had mentioned that there was a, as he called it, a caveat in that they have six months per the permitting process to start and finish the project, the tear down, the demo, the cleanup. And he said, however, if they go out there in that interim period, work for a little bit, that clock resets. It's another six months. So I was hoping to get some clarification on that at some point. That's the question, is that real, is that real? And if we could close that loophole, that'd be great. And then, second, I'm asking city council and mayor to consider, is it really a realistic timeline for six months? Because in talking to other Hampton Roads communities, they don't have six months. So I'm wondering why Portsmouth allows for such an extended period of time, and I think it would be better served for Portsmouth to tighten that period up, because as we saw with this project, which started in December and technically had through June 3rd to finish, that just lingers, and then that becomes this public hazard to the community. So I'm asking for the council to look into that first question. What's that timeline, that caveat look like? And then, second, consider what that code might look like if you reduce that timeline from six months down to something, maybe four, so that we don't have this situation again, where we just have this project stalled, and they just kind of come in an hour here and an hour there, and in the meantime, we in the neighborhood have to look at that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and we will have, the manager will, will have that information reported back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speak.
Councilman Dotson.
Oh, I can't, I'm sorry, I, some of my screen is not registering. Councilman Dotson, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Your presentation spawned a lot of thought in a couple of members, and yes, we are talking, I can't say we're considering or going to change it yet, but we are talking about some of those ordinances and things that need to be cleaned up already. It's, it's going to be an item we talk about. Thank you so much for bringing it up.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Walter Smith. Mr. Smith, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
My name is Walter Smith. I live at 224 Charles Avenue. I've lived there since 1991. I'm going to bring up three problems and possible solutions that I'm tired of. I'm angry. So do you know that in the city of Portsmouth, before your light changes green, when their light changes red, there's a four-second delay? That four-second delay allows and accommodates people running the red light. I've been to Chesapeake, and I've actually looked at their light and timed it, there's two-second delay. Norfolk, Virginia Beach goes right from red to green. Portsmouth has a four-second delay. Why is that? It's a good idea. It's probably prevented numerous accidents, but it's a four-second delay which allows red light runners to run the red light. Stop signs, they're stopional to these people. They roll them through them. Anyway, so I'm just really tired of it. Boston bus stops, right? It's reckless endangerment, and if you look at the definition of reckless endangerments, the act of recklessly exposing someone to a substantial risk, death, or serious physical injury, right? Going down Elliott, I live on Charles Avenue, Elliott parallels it. I was driving down there Saturday, doing 25 miles an hour. Car flew right by me, crossed the W L line, and did 45, 50 miles an hour ahead of me and disappeared. That's on Elliott, where the speed limit is 25. My street, my street alone, 25 mile an hour in a residential area. We had an accident there Thursday night. Speeder turned on our street, 350 feet, I measured it, 350 feet from Maupin to Charles Avenue to where he hit the first vehicle, peeled the back tire off a Kia Sorento, slammed into a 7,000-pound F-250, wrecked the frame, which is totaled, and knocked the truck 60 feet. Police officer ticketed the driver 35 into 25. Simple math, force equals mass times acceleration tells you alone he was doing 50 miles an hour. 350 feet, so when he turned on the street, he stepped on the gas pedal and slammed into those two vehicles. You know, and there's kids that play up and down the street. I've been up here, I think it was about six or seven years ago, asking for speed bumps, asking for help. All right, the two, the F-250 and the Mazda were totaled. The Kia's damage is $5,000. The driver has limited liability, $25,000 coverage. Both these two individuals whose vehicles were parked in their street in front of their house have to claim uninsured motors, and they have to pay their deductible. One of them's $500, the other one has to pay 200. What's fair about that? I don't even have a front yard. My vehicles are parked in my front yard. I have no grass growing there. I'm afraid to park my, my vehicle in the street. I have a driveway, I have two vehicles there, my grandson's living with me, I have him parking his vehicle up in my yard. I'm tired of it. Something has got to be done. So I'm bringing you problems, speeding, running red lights, running stop signs. So one of the things that I've looked at was, I walk my dog at night back in the neighborhood, and there's the sign up there for crimes with drug and gun violence in a school zone, and I was told by a police officer that it's attack on charge. So why not do the same thing for speeders exceeding the speed limit in a residential area? Attack on vehicle, well, let me, I've got it here somewhere. Yeah, here you go. Vehicle endangerment. Make it a class-two felony of, or a class-two misdemeanor if they're going over the speed limit, 10 miles over the speed limit. Or greater than that, a class-one misdemeanor. You know, when I worked as a manager at Norfolk Naval Shipyard, I would hit the people where it hurt, Pocket National Bank, make them start paying, hold them accountable for these crimes. It's deliberate, stop signs are stopional to these individuals, and I'm tired of it. And anybody in this room can tell me they've seen it as well. Going home, you can see it. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for bringing those concerns. Certainly, they speak to our priority, which is public safety. Mr. Manager, given that one of the issues brought to us by Mr. Smith is that there are children playing, I know that in the Old Town neighborhood, we did ask the city to put kids at play signs. I know that's, that's not going to solve all of the problems you've brought, but that is a fix that we could potentially get done very quickly. They're bright, they're fairly obvious to drivers. It might be something small that we can do while we look at the larger issues in that neighborhood.
Consider.
Thank you.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And while we're at it, Mr. Manager, could we initiate the speed study process, just to find out if there are other actions that are warranted based on a speed survey?
Vice Mayor Moody, ma'am, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. To follow up on Councilwoman Bryant's suggestion, can anyone on staff speak to the process of getting the kids at play sign on their particular street?
I can't. Manager Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Absolutely. Well, we have a sign division that works on our traffic management area. We'll talk to those guys and see if there's any particular requirements, but I don't think there is, there is no state or federal requirements that covers where those signs are placed.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Goddard-Yutrowski. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Mayor, council, and other neighbors, so unlike the council that existed prior to this, this January, y'all are somewhat more low-key, and I know you don't like to take up too much time with, with long speeches and the like, but I want you to know, I would appreciate, if you vote against an item, if you're going to vote against an item on the agenda, I'd like to hear your reasons for voting against it. If you're going to vote for, for an item, I'd like to hear your, your reasons for voting for it, but it's not as informative as when you vote against. In, in the countdown of the budget sub-items, there were a few no votes, but no explanation. And your thinking that guided those votes could be very helpful to your constituents. There might be something you know that we don't, and we would benefit from your sharing. So please keep that in mind for the future. I've had the pleasure of receiving some responses in writing to correspondence that I have sent you all. This is, this is something that hasn't happened much in my 29 years as a citizen advocate, and I like it. So more is better. Keep those cards and letters coming. Again, in evaluating your performance as an elected official, it's helpful to me to know what your thinking is. know what your thinking is. I have not, in my, in my long presence on this planet, developed the ability to read minds, so I can read messages, and I can hear what you say in official proceedings. So those, those are instructive to me. I was interested in your discussion in the work session about whether to show the discount in the property tax rate as a new property tax rate, or to show it as the longstanding property tax rate with a, an also-stated discount. You all had a good discussion of the pros and cons of doing it one way or the other. I have to tell you that I favor the hold on to what you had and give the discount because I, I agree with the council member who said that anything goes up in Washington right now, and what we may have to fill at the local level concerns me with the pullback of funding at the federal and to some extent at the state level these days. I'm hoping in November, we will change the temperature and the character of state government for the better, but we are going to have to deal with the Washington situation for a while. So I, I believe, having seen a six-cent increase during my tenure as a citizen in Portsmouth, six-cent rate increase, the universal howls that came out of it, they didn't last a single year or a single budget cycle. They went on, and they created some trauma in the body public. So I think the more conservative approach is probably better from a public relations standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, and then Councilman Tillage. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Mr. Godalski, your comments are always welcome insight into another, another purview and opinion, and Mr. Smith, Mr. Neal, don't want to leave anyone out, Ms. Rockwell, all of our citizens that come down and speak to us, and Ms. Joseph, I know you'll be speaking too, that come down and speak to us, is we value your input, and so we take all of it in, even if we don't comment after each comment or presentation that you bring forth. We're taking it all in to then go back and see how we can always be better, because there's always room for improvement. And so to your point, Mr. Godalski, about, you know, providing some more insight, we, we did add that extra Monday work session, which I think, you know, you've seen, we do a lot of conversation for the public, we do a lot of discussion in those meetings, but to your point, when it's a voting item up here, we could do more to just make sure that if you missed, if anyone didn't hear the discussion items, that kind of led us to our decision here to bring that forth. So point taken, great input, and really great input from all of our citizens that provide just recommendations on how we can operate better as a council, so thank you for that.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mark Godalde-Gutroski, there's a reason I like you, and you always keep us accountable. And you actually use words that I use to other people, and when you vote no, say why. And so I concur with my colleague, Councilwoman Thomas's response, but I will go to the three items that I voted no on and explain why. For 25-128A, excuse me, 25-126B and C relate to water sewage and stormwater fee increase, I do not support increasing our water bills, nor do I support increasing fees on stormwater. I don't, I think right now, there's a lot of financial burdens that our families are facing, and I don't think adding any additional fees helps that, and so that's why I voted no. For 25-126I, which relates to the schools budget, my colleague, Councilwoman Edmonds Thomas, did a very good job explaining why. From the very beginning, I was strong in expressing my support on fully funding the schools, and there's been a lot of conversation up to this point. I respect that decision of my colleagues, but I do not support that, and so that's why I voted against the school budget, because I believed we should have fully funded the request. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Joseph. Mayor, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. First of all, I was going to speak on some updates that I had wanted to bring to, maybe not everybody know the update about, I was complaining about the water bill, and I have been notified to get the answer that June 3rd will be up and running, the update for the new system, and I was glad to hear about that. Thank you, Mr. Carter, and you and Ms. Stokes. And I wanted to talk about what Mr. Smith was saying. My son and I have been putting things on paper to work with the city to address the issues of the running of the stop signs. If you go on Decree and Elliott, not Decree and Demons, you'll see a new stop sign. I was asking for the light, but they used the stop sign, it's very tall with lit-up lights going around. So that will help address, we're going to see how long and monitor that and see, do it help? And then on Grand Street, like you're going to Douglas Park, on the opposite side with Noah Street, is one there where I live. And it's three more locations, I'm waiting for those locations to be sent to me so that we can monitor those. Now, we have had a lot of people talking about the speeding, and Seth, myself and my son have experienced, when we riding down the street and trying to make a turn, before we can come out of the turn, people speeding going around us can cause an accident. But for that, we was also saying, for the stop sign runner and the speeders, come up with to something about the ones that speeding, some new regulations of when you get caught. I tell people, get involved, and when you see somebody speeding, these cell phones catch license plates and turn them in. We work with the chief of police on some things that we want to implement, but those things that he complained about, the speeding and the bump, we were told in Portsmouth, in our community, we couldn't put speed bumps, but we seen some things with the speed limit of 20, because a lot of streets are very small and short, and maybe we can find out how they got approved for to put 20 miles per hour in Cavalier Manor. And the little ones I see when you're going around in a circle by TCC, maybe we can get something like that, because I noticed when you give a certain mileage, people go beyond that, you know, extra mile to try to speed. When I was going across the bridge while they were fixing it, a young man speeded past me and bypassed me to get to Churchland, and by the time I got to the stoplight to go to the bank, Credit Union, I asked him, why would you speed? And he said, I'm a speed driver. But if I would have had my phone up fast enough, I would have caught it. I told the police officer, but at the time, he was retired. He couldn't do anything. So anyway, I'm just saying, we as citizens, for those that are listening, I have had people to send me email or just give me a phone call and say, we hear what you're doing out in Fairville, we would like to see some of those things being addressed in the neighborhood. So all we got to do is connect with each other, work with each other, work with the city. I know that the city doing a lot in this city to get information out for you to communicate for those that are listening. Y'all, y'all going out to wait, marketing and everything, and all the people got to do is sit down and follow the instruction for those that know how to utilize it. That's all I wanted to say. It's a lot of things we can get done, but we got to help the city out as citizens.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have Councilwoman Edmonds Thomas, who wishes to have the floor. Let me have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Just, just a quick question. I think I heard at the beginning, Ms. Joseph mentioned three locations for lighting. Did I hear that five, well, five locations? I know we've been talking about lighting. I just wanted to see if we could track those additional locations to look at as we're going through our lighting study and working with Dominion Energy. I know we've been adding locations as, you know, as we are aware of them. Is that possible, or is that kind of out of the realm of what we're doing with our Dominion Light Study?
Mr. Carter, you have the floor.
I'm not sure she was talking about, I thought she was talking about stop signs.
Stop signs. The lights are loud, but also-
Yeah, she's talking, she's talking about the stop sign that has the red lights around the end of the stop-
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about streetlights. I'm sorry. Okay. I thought I heard her mention streetlights, and I didn't know if I was, okay, if, if that was, if that was something you were mentioning, I just wanted to make sure we got that location, if it's regarding streetlights, because we are following up on some streetlights. If that's not, I can get with you after the meeting to just get clarity on that. Thank you.
Can I say this, Mayor? Ms. Joseph?
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Ms. Joseph, if you don't mind, give those addresses to Ms. Bernadette, who's sitting there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, that was our last speaker, and since there's no more business to conduct, this meeting is adjourned. Enjoy your weekend.